2020. We're running a little bit late. It's about 6:04 PM. At this time, everyone would stand for the invocation and the pledge. We got our very own journalist, Mr. Jamie Watcher.
Lord Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you for letting us all be here this evening and gather together, and we pray for your guidance and wisdom as the board conducts the county's business this evening, and please lead them to make wise decisions and let us all get home safely later tonight in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Once again, I'd like to say welcome to everybody. Our first item up tonight is approval of amendments from our February 18th, 2020 regular board meeting. Do I have any discussion, or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved secondly.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fleming, got a second by Commissioner Gamble. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving along to the consent agenda. At this time, I'm gonna pull item 13 for discussion. I'm gonna ask at this time, items two through 12, do I have any other items wishing to be pulled, or do I have a motion to approve?
No one has one to be pulled. I make a motion to approve.
I got a motion by Commissioner Gamble.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This time, we'll discuss, Mr. Harris brings us up to speed on item 13, please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, item 13 is actually the culmination of years of search by Mr. Pravat and I. About seven years ago, we had a discussion with the board about finding a property large enough to accommodate growth of county departments. At the time, we were looking a lot at what we're doing on the airport. As you know, we've got a fire station out there, we've got county administration and the road department, our facilities building is out there, facilities maintenance building is out there. We've got a lay down yard for materials that we use for road construction, and it takes up a large percentage of our airport. What the board realized back then was that we don't have a lot of services that we deliver to our constituents in the county by airplane. So we decided that would be a better use of the airport if we were to lease that space out to some aviation industry or business that needs access to an airstrip. So Mr. Pravat and I began the long, drawn out task of trying to find a piece of property. And we have spoken to numerous property owners over the years. One, we knew that we needed to be south of the city limits, outside the city limits, because we've got lots of heavy equipment, lots of trucks going through school zones every day, taking a lot of additional time to make our rounds moving materials from the mine up to the north end of the county. And we finally were able to locate a piece of property recently. That's gonna save us a significant amount of money. And those, over the years, we've sat down and tried to come up with a rough estimate on what it would save us in just moving materials out to the airport from our mine. And given this new proposed location, it looks like we'll save somewhere between $200,000 and $250,000 a year in improved efficiencies with moving material because we're not slowing down in urban traffic. So I'll also point out that we're in a much better position to pay for this property than we were when we started looking. We had so many large projects going on at the time that we were pretty well strapped for cash. And we had the money to go ahead and pay for this very recently, but then we just got good news even last week. A lot of money that we've been waiting on finally showed up for a lot of the repairs that we made that FEMA reimbursed for over the years. So we've been waiting for years for some of that money to come in. It finally did. We also have a significant amount of unanticipated revenue associated with non-advalorm offset funds that the state sends us. So we can cover the cost of this without borrowing any money. And it's just gonna be a whole lot better for us going forward because it'll enable us to make more efficient use of the resources that we have and save a great deal of money long term. So I'm just asking that you go ahead and approve this, and Mr. Pravat and I will take care of this and go ahead and get it wrapped up. I can't give a lot of details. You've heard me say this before. Under the statute, all of the terms are confidential until we close these deals.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Do I have any other questions or comments on it? Or do I have a motion to approve item 13 as read? Got a motion by Commissioner Fleming?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving ahead. We have a time, specific couple of items here. Item 14, I'll read it into the minutes. At 6:05 PM, or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution approving special permit request number SP-20-03-01 by Patchwork Solar, Trinum Law and Environmental Consulting and Technology Incorporated, authorized agent for Odessa Moses Trustee, to be granted a special permit under section 4.4.5 of the Swanee County Land Development Regulations for Utilities and Related Facilities. At this time, we're gonna open the public hearing. I'll have the county attorney, if anyone is wishing to speak on this matter, to be sworn in.
If you wish to speak, would you all please stand? Even if you are not real sure, please stand. All right. Will each of you raise your right hand? Do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you would give before the board this evening will be the truth, so help you God? All right. When you do come up to speak, would you please state your name and address for the record clearly into the microphone? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pravat. At this time, we'll have staff presentation. Mr. Meeks.
Mr. Chairman, board members, the first application that you have before you use is special permit number SP-20-03-01. As we'd previously stated, the special permit request is for utilities and related facilities. The subject property is located on a 230-acre tract that is made up of two parcel ID numbers. The location of the property is in section three, Township Six South, Range 14 East, on County Road 248. The, you'll see on the agenda, we have two special permit requests. This first one is on the south side of County Road 248, and it's approximately 1.7 miles east of the intersection of County Road 248 and US 129. The property is owned agricultural one. The applicants, on behalf of the property owner, have applied for a special permit for utilities and related facilities. The intent is to develop the property into a 74.9 megawatt solar farm. In addition to the application, the applicant has submitted a narrative describing the project detailing and outlining the requirements of section 14.6 of the Land Development Regulations, which shows the findings in which the board has to look at in making their approval or denial from special permit request. Also attached is a site plan showing the location of the proposed site, areas that will have solar arrays and other improvements to the site. The site plan also addresses the security fence and landscape buffer that is proposed to be put around the perimeter of the site and will be planted around the boundary of the site. If the board chooses to approve the special permit, we have prepared language in the resolution for approval. The resolution does contain two attachments that is shown as attachment B. It was previously discussed by this board at a previous solar application. At this time, I'll read those conditions. If it is for approval, you can add to or take away from these attachments. But the first one addresses the security fence in that the applicant's security fence shall be placed along the rear of the required setback, which would put the fence inside the buffer area between the adjoining properties and road rights of way. The second condition is following completion of construction, the applicant will plant shrubs and trees between the adjoining roads, adjoining property, and solar farm outside of the applicant's security fence. Together with existing trees and vegetation around the perimeter of the property, the newly planted trees and shrubs will create a visual screen and buffer around the solar farm and a transition between road rights of way, adjoining property, and the solar farm. The area shall be so designed, planted, and maintained as to be 80% or more opaque between two feet and six feet above the average ground level when viewed horizontally. This requirement shall be accomplished within 30 months of construction completion. Any shrubs or trees in the vegetative screen which die shall be removed and new shrubs or trees as appropriate shall be planted. That was previous language that we had used on another solar site, so we just carried that over as a condition here. The board had previously stated that that was the direction they would like to see us go. Jimmy Norris and myself has met the proposed developers out at the site, did a little site inspection, and we kinda went over some of these requirements that the board had looked at. The applicant is here to present their application to the board, answer any specific questions regarding the construction, their timeframes, and their intended use. If the board doesn't have any questions of me at this time, I would enter the file into the record.
Thank you. I'll take the file and the application and all the attachments therein as composite exhibit one.
Thank you, Mr. Pravat. Do I have any questions from the board for Mr. Meeks? At this time, sir, do you have something you'd like to share with us? On behalf of, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Yes, please. Yeah, my name is Paul Wittridge. That's W-H-I-T-T-R-E-D-G-E. And my address is 800 Taylor Street in Durham, North Carolina, 27701. So I'm here representing the Patchwork Solar application, and that application is coming from a company called Strata Solar. I'm here as an employee of Strata Solar. And I had some slides, but it seems like there's a technology issue, so I'll just talk you through what is on these slides, and then some specifics about the project, and of course, answer any questions. So Strata Solar is a family-owned vertically-integrated solar company. We're owned by a family that has made their living in North Carolina, and they have developed solar projects throughout the southeast. So when we say we're vertically-integrated, that means we develop the projects. So we start and we come to present to counties and communities like you all. We build the projects, and then we maintain them and operate them long term. So we are only interested in developing projects that we feel like we want to own for the next 40 years. And for that reason, we're really focused on high-quality value creation and being a good steward of the land where we locate our projects and being good steward of the value of our projects. So just a couple notable projects over the years. We've built over 200 projects. That's a total of over 2,000 megawatts. And for reference, again, this is a 74.9 megawatt project we're seeking approval for. In Florida, notably, we built a five-megawatt project for Reedy Creek, which is the Disney World utility. You might actually have seen a picture of it. I have it here. If you all are interested to see afterward, it's shaped like Mickey Mouse with three circles. It's kind of a cool project. We just recently completed construction of the largest project on the east coast in Virginia for the Dominion Utility. It's about 140 megawatts. We've done projects in Mississippi and Georgia, South Carolina, and North Carolina, really all over the southeast. And virtually all these projects, with a few exceptions, we monitor from our NERC compliant facility in Durham, North Carolina. So these are projects that we are the long-term steward of and that we are seeing through for the entire duration of their functional life. So that's a bit about Strata Solar. And now I'd like to talk a bit about the specifics of this project. Mr. Meeks detailed approximately where the project is located. I have a map here. Unfortunately, you can't see it, but it's to the south of the county, and the project is located on parcels owned by two landowners for whom we are the authorized agents. As Mr. Meeks said, we go to great lengths to be compliant with the vegetation requirements that you all propose. Strata actually employs a full-time horticulturist who is a specialist in developing plans for native vegetation that will be able to take hold in a realistic amount of time and then self-sustain. We also focus on trying to create vegetation that'll be a pollinator-friendly habitat. So to get into the specifics a bit, as you'll see in the plan, there will be a 25-foot buffer of vegetation which will meet the two-to-six-foot 80% opacity requirement, and then a seven-foot tall fence with no barbed wire. So there's no barbed wire anywhere on the fence, and then another 25 feet from the fence to the equipment boundary. That will be for the portions of the property lines where we are not retaining or there is no current vegetation. For approximately half or more of the property boundaries, as marked again on the plan, there is already a substantial vegetation barrier, so that will remain in place. So that's some specifics about the project. And I guess I'd like to just mention a few benefits to Swanee County. So in general, the reason that so many solar farms are being built is because it's the cheapest way to generate electricity right now. And that's because the technology has improved just tremendously over the last 10 years. So that's why FPL and Duke are commissioning so many of these projects. It's really a very inexpensive way to generate electricity. So for that reason, an indirect benefit to Swanee County will be less expensive electricity. More direct benefits will include temporary construction jobs, diversification of the local economy, and no additional burden on schools, roads, sewage, water, or sanitation. And this will come with significantly increased tax revenue. So we're estimating $300,000 to $400,000 of tax revenue in the first year of operations, which would be approximately 18 months after construction begins, which we hope to begin in the next 12 months. So in approximately two and a half years, the first year of expected taxes would be between $300,000 and $400,000. So with that, I'd love to take any more questions from you all or answer any questions from the public. I'm not sure exactly what your protocol is.
Okay. How we'll start it with, do I have any questions from the board? Any comments?
Not this time. I don't have any.
Yeah, not at the moment.
I've got one question. Just trying to understand the design here.
Yep.
The, what we have in the packet, we have two yellow sections, one, and then we have some blank sections that are spelled out across 248. So where are the intended solar panels to go as well as the substation?
Yeah. So I'm looking at your plan here, and let me just zoom in so I can speak in more detail about it. The solar panels will go on the yellow portions of the plan. So there's a portion of the yellow area that is north of 248 and a portion that is south of the 248. And then north of 248, there's an unshaded yellow, white portion around, in the middle of some yellow portions. That is not, that property is not owned by the landowner that we're working with in this case, and so there would be no solar panels there. And it's important to note that there is a significant existing vegetative boundary around that portion of the parcel that we're not building panels on, and we'd of course create a new vegetative boundary where there was not already one in place. The substation is proposed to be located adjacent to Duke Energy Florida's transmission line that crosses the parcel south of 248. It would either likely be at the extreme west of the parcel, just north of the transmission line, or at the extreme east of the parcel, just north of the transmission line.
So basically, on the far west or on 77th, off 77th Road?
Exactly. And we're also acutely aware of the substation setback boundaries. I believe it's 100 feet, and so we'd be very sensitive to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'm gonna open the floor to public comment, but what I'd like to say before we get started on that, a lot of times when you get in discussions like this, there's two sides. There's a side that's for it, and there's a side that's against it. All I ask is that we're all respectful of each other. We all live in Swanee County, for the most part of everyone that's here, and we want the best for Swanee County, whether it's for this project or against it. So contrary to what we all see on TV and witness every night, we don't operate the same way up here. I want us to be respectful, and I want everybody to be able to say their piece. With that being said, if you would like to be heard, please make your way to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Stephanie.
Stephanie.
My name's Stephanie Notton. Our address is 8114 County Road 248, O'Brien, Florida. We are the landowners of the yellow. That is not there. I don't really know how this works. I have some questions that I would like to ask and some things that I have concerned about.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to know how the company is going to prevent the shifting of panels when there are small holes. That, one of the fields is filled with sinkholes. That's recently, the sinkholes have been filled in by the man that's renting the land now. Mr. Sanchez, he came in to be able to farm the land and to run cows on that land. He filled the sinkholes in. My question is, when those sinkholes fall again, because they will fall again, it's just a matter of time, it will cause the panels on the, to shift and create a mirror glare. And if they are maintaining these panels from North Carolina, how will they know? And how are they going to fix these in a timely manner? I mean, you could even have just a small pocket gopher run under them and cause them to shift. And we have plenty of those, plenty of armadillos. And I know that there are fences there, but we know that these are little rodents that crawl under fence. So that is one of my questions that I would like answered. Another one of my questions that I would like to answer is that solar panels will deteriorate over time. And once again, and it can be, they can deteriorate from sand and wind and dirt, temperature fluctuations, and I want to know how are they going to repair those and to prevent that glare. Once again, and how will you know when those panels need to be repaired? I'm guessing by that they're not reproducing the amount of energy that you need. But that's, those are some concerns of mine. I also have a concern just for the county. Are our firemen trained to fight a solar fire? And who's gonna be responsible to train those? And who's gonna pay for that training? He offered us $200,000 or $300,000, but are we gonna have to turn around as a county to spend money to train people to prevent fires? Because in California, a bird landed on two of those wires, caught it a fire, 1,127 acres were burnt. And we all know that California has decided that it's the way to go with solar energy, which I'm not, you know, I'm not saying I'm opposing to solar energy. I'm just saying a concern. They like to burn up out there all the time. Before they had all these solar panels, we didn't hear about all those wildfires. Just a concern, just a question to ask you. And another question I have to ask is, if this company files bankruptcy or subleases to another company, which if you will do research, you will see that is a common occurrence going on in solar companies, that they will file bankruptcy, file under a different name, and these contracts that they have, they are a course for the company, because that's, if I was selling something, I would want it to benefit myself. And I'm sure that's what they want to do, too. But I want to know if these, if that happens, or, you know, who's gonna be responsible to decommission these things?
Yes, ma'am.
We're fortunate enough to have some grandchildren, and we would like to, you know, I may not be here in 40 years. Chances are I won't be. I will be. I'll be 96. So, but my grandchildren hopefully will still be here, and, you know, hopefully the land will be theirs. And, you know, it's always important to look after people that's coming after you. One other concern or thing that I have a question about is, when you do decommission those, where are you gonna put those things? That's a long-term project, but you offer the county $200,000 or $300,000. You might better start putting that money in savings because inside of those panel cells, there are some chemicals that are not friendly to the environment.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's just a, another thought for you to think about is that, you know, it might look good for today, but what about for tomorrow? You know, I'm concerned about that. And I know that there's not a whole, a whole lot that we can, you know, may not can do, but I know that nitrogen trifluoride is in those solar cells, and I know I don't want it leaked. And suppose we have a hurricane comes through and those panels are destroyed, what are you gonna do about all that that's leaked into them? And we live right there. I mean, we have a fence that separates, basically, we have maybe 50 yards, 50 feet between our house and the fence. So we're right there. We have neighbors all the way around us.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, it's not like you got a place out there in the desert where there's no neighbors. You're bringing this into our home. This is our home, you know, and you're bringing this solar farm into our home. And it is into our home. You know, we, some research shows that living beside solar panels, and I don't know if I believe this research, because I haven't had ample amount of time to research it, but talked about that it wouldn't affect the schoolchildren. I am a schoolteacher. So, but some research shows that these solar panels that they have in the cities, and they may have a 10 or 20 acre, or park with them in there, and they're showing that when the children come and play, that they cause ADHD, because it's a steady little tiny, tiny hum. And what happens is that it just interferes with the transmission of the children's brain cells. And I don't know if that's true. You know, everything causes ADHD. We know that. But, you know, it is something for you to look up, investigate, you know? I don't want my grandson to, you know, he hasn't, he was a preemie child, and he has some issues because he was born early. And I'm concerned about him being able to go out and play in the yard. You know, are these things going to affect him? It's a big concern for us. We're worried about it big time. But, you know, we, when we settled there as a farming community, I'm not against, you know, change or anything like that, but I just feel like that this might be something that we, you know, might want to evaluate. Another thing, are the solar panels gonna be trackers to the sun, or are they gonna be stationary? Because if they're trackers, then what are you gonna do with that hydraulic fluid and the oil that it takes to go in and keep these things going? Because you know that if it moves continuously, it's gonna have to be oil. And where are you gonna put, you know, put all that oil?
Yes, ma'am.
And when people go in and clean them, where are you gonna put all the waste that, you know, comes from cleaning something?
I've made notes here of your questions. If you wanna have a seat, I'm gonna let Mr. Wayne Wright speak. And then, you have someone? But ma'am, I'm gonna, we're gonna have the gentleman answer your questions in just a few minutes. I'm on. You look familiar. You look familiar.
Wesley Wainwright, 16672129th Road, McAlpin.
Welcome.
Fellas, I'm about 10 miles from this, so it's not, you know, I'm not a neighbor. I'm a farmer. What I do is what I love, and I love Swanee County. These things are unattractive to me. And it's that way for another 30 or 40 years, our lifetime. Swanee County has an aesthetic appeal to folks that want to come here, whether it's to visit, whether it's to live, work, whatever. And so I know y'all are mindful of that, but I just felt like I wanted to say it, because there's nothing more enjoyable to go out and look at the wide open space and we get to see turkeys and deer and all this kind of stuff. And I know y'all enjoy the same things. That picture will disappear here, again, for the rest of our life. I'm not opposed, I'm torn on this issue, because I love the fact that we have opportunity to do what we want to do with our land. And I'm not opposed to that. But then again, this is something, again, that's going to change the landscape, again, for the rest of our life. I'm grateful that the zoning board or whoever, and I know this board has put in some guidelines before, I'm grateful, I'm thankful. The gentleman used the words being a good steward. That's what our role is. The good Lord give us the responsibility to be stewards over what he's blessed us with, whether it's in our personal life or whatever. So as long as we keep that in mind and that we're going to be stewards of what we have control over, y'all have been blessed to have an opportunity to be stewards over this county, the business of this county, but your residents as well. I just, that's really my only concern. I just want to make sure that we're making effort, every effort, to, you know, I know the buffer's going to be there and that'll help conceal it to some degree. But in the future, as we're moving forward, please, y'all really study these things and make sure that we're maintaining the appeal of what Swanee County is, because once agriculture, once these farming lands go out of the picture, they don't ever return. They're going to be replaced by people, houses, industry, and all those things take away from what we enjoy, what we've grown up to love here in our community. So be careful. And again, thank you to the zoning board and to y'all for putting in that buffer zone, that conservation easement, to make sure that, you know, some of this is kind of concealed. I do have one question. Mr. Hancock shared with me, I didn't have information ahead of time, and so forgive me, I'll have to read it, just curiosity. And Mr. Provost, you might have to answer this, but there's a 75 megawatt threshold for the Florida Electrical Power Plant Siding Act. What is it that we want to stay away from that, once you go from 74.9 to 75 and above, what in that picture changes? How does that affect, or would it affect us? What is it in this Electrical Power Plant Siding Act that, and it might be there to protect us, I don't know. So that's my only question about that one.
Thank you, Mr. Wainwright. Anyone else wishing to speak? Welcome.
Brenda Terry.
You can pull it down. Just, there you go.
I'm Brenda Terry Clark, 252877th Road, O'Brien, Florida. We are located directly across the road from where they're proposing to put the solar. We are also, farmers have been farming this community for over 100 years, and I have been on our current farm for over 70 years. We have three families that it will be affecting. I know you're thinking of the whole county, but we have, as Ms. Knighton said, families all around that are going to be affected. And it's been frustrating to find out about this at such a late period of time. It was only 10 days that the notice was posted. Before that, I didn't have information about it. And when I went online and tried to find, it's really difficult finding information about it. And I found out just during the meeting so far, that it is not even connecting to our Swanee Valley Electric. And this is what we have, where we're located, is Swanee Valley Electric Cooperative. And this goes to Duke's Energy. And the aesthetics has been mentioned, and it's going to be west of us, we won't have a view of the sunset anymore, we'll have a view of the fence. And what you propose to do with the gopher tortoises that are endangered, they're there, they're all around us. There's a lot of issues that have already been brought up. And these panels usually last for like, maybe 25 years? And there's a big issue of disposing of them and having to rebuild. And landfills don't want them, from what I'm reading. They contain a lot of chemicals and other things that are really bad for the environment. So we need to look down the road at this also. And I thank you and I appreciate your time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. White.
Franklin White, 7323180th Street, McAlpin. I heard you mention a while ago that it was going to reduce our power bills in Swanee County. I'd like to know how that goes about, since it doesn't feed directly to Swanee Valley, it goes straight to Duke Energy. I'm not against solar, but I echo the same concerns that everybody else has. Also, are we offering any tax abatement on this at all? Or what? So it's full avalorum tax, or how does that work?
My understanding, Mr. Provost.
Go ahead.
I should say, my understanding is the state offers whatever abatements they do, and then they preempt us, do they not, on everything? So we pretty much don't have a say in it.
So, I mean, we don't generate any tax revenue on this, or?
No, we do. We do.
Percentage-wise?
When? And when does that start? And how long does it last? Do we have that?
Forever.
For the facilities that are under the 74 point, or the 75?
Yeah, lean forward.
Sorry. I think for those facilities, they're generally, it's about 20% of what the tax revenue would normally be. It goes as long as the facility is operational. Right now, they had a change in the legislature this past year that extended the time for the tax abatement issue.
So we're getting 20% of what it's valued at?
Yeah, whatever the assessed value is, they get an 80% reduction, and you get the assessment at 20%.
For as long as it's there.
The way the state has the statute written.
Thank you.
That's not a county rule, that's a state.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Just to clarify for the public.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
Do I have anyone else wishing to be heard? Please don't hesitate to come up. I mean, this is an important matter and decision before this board. If you're for or against, please say your piece, don't leave here without doing that.
Kevin Knighton. My current address is 122 Hillcrest Circle, Branford, Florida. I also own property across from where this is being discussed. So the Barnett portion would be literally my view from my front porch in the future. And I guess that's my question is, if I were sitting in your seat, would I want to vote, put this in my front yard? And that's my question to you, you know? Would you put this in your own front yard? That's my only question.
I'll take the civil oath, counselor.
Mr. Coke, do you swear from the testimony you give before the board this evening will be the truth, so up you go.
I do.
Thank you. Please state your full name.
John Coke, 1805289th Road, McAlpin, Florida. Answering some of the questions, a lot of these solar panels are made out of silicon. Yes, and there are some other means that are put in there, but it's minor and it can be controlled. A life of a panel is more than 25 or 30 years, because you're not looking at the efficiency of the panels. Panels will always produce power. How do I know this? I have a 6.9 kilowatt system and a 5 kilowatt system powering the house for the past 10 years. We all want power. We want power immediately, but yet we're getting power from finite fossil fuels, which are getting more expensive to produce than we all can afford. If every residence and every acre was filled between McAlpin and Branford, we'd see an increase of population of 38,000 to 40,000 people, so we already have those people here. I am mindful of the interface between residential use and agricultural use, and residential use and large use for manufacturing, of which I consider solar power one of those needs. We need power. It goes into Duke Energy, which sells to Swanee Valley Electric or to other cooperatives at 11 cents per kilowatt hour. I get paid 3.8 cents per kilowatt hour I send into the grid. And my system has sent into the grid in the past nine years, six megawatts of power that you all have been using. I'm sorry that these units have to go here, because they have to go through and near high-power transmission lines which exist. And unfortunately, Swanee County has got three main electrical transmission power lines going through this county. So they almost have no choice. They cannot go other places without high transmission power lines. And they're more worse, or have worse consequences to the environment because of the radiation that comes from these electricals. I can pull power from the power that goes through my property. I can pull power from it, and I can get in trouble for pulling that power from it. So you have those radiation effects through high transmission lines already. The buzz is minimal. I have gone through several, eight, in several states to listen to this so-called buzz, and it's only there at the utility which collects all of it, and it is barely audible from 300 meters. Other effects, time will tell, there may be a concern. What do they do with these things? They take them apart and they reuse the materials. Gentlemen, I'm sorry that the solar companies are coming here, but we have the land, we have the transmission line, and it is cost-effective to provide power for all of us that we want immediately and now and today. Please allow this company with the assurance that they will use the Master Gardener program and look at the plants and the flowers that will add to the county for the environment and for God's creatures that will live under these things. Do not be afraid of the things that we need to keep and sustain the lifestyles that we want and that we wish to keep. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Coke. At this time, I'd like to have our safety director, Mr. McCook, come up for a second. She had some questions about if we've had any type of discussions or safety on solar panel fires?
Yes, sir. Fire Department, we went out to the Moss facility back in the beginning stages and did a walk-through, and we have a pretty good understanding of how they work, and at this time, there's no issues. We'll have a contact person, and once we have an emergency there, before we enter the site, there'll be a contact person, a close-prox send me that'll take us into the facility and secure the power, so we can do whatever we need to do.
I didn't ask you, when you come, would you state your name and who you are?
Adam McCook, I'm the Health and Safety Director for Swanee County. My address is 5150180th Street, McAlpin, Florida.
Thank you. I just wanted to know you represent Swanee County Fire Rescue, so that's why I asked you to speak on it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
At this time, I'd like to have the gentleman that's representing the solar company come back forward. Let's start out, I made a couple of notes here. Could you answer the St. Cole question?
Absolutely, yeah. And let me just also state for the record that I live right now in North Carolina, but I'm from rural Massachusetts, and this is an issue that we contend with there as well. And I very much respect and honor your connection to the land, and I'm happy to answer any of the questions here. And, yeah, I'll just do my best to tell the truth as I understand it. So the sinkholes is something that, coincidentally, we are working on literally as we speak over the last couple of days, including today. So let me tie in this answer to the endangered species, including the gopher tortoise answer that was raised. So the state of Florida has an environmental resource permitting law, which means that any project that might affect the waterways, particularly the wetlands of Florida, must receive an environmental resource permit from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to be able to be built. So that's much like a construction permit you all would issue, the state issues a construction permit. And that construction permit, the ERP, requires us to avoid take of any endangered species and also requires us to ensure that there is no effect on the stormwater runoff from this project. So there will be no additional stormwater runoff from this project to elsewhere. We're not going to affect any wetlands at all, we're not building in them, we're completely avoiding them. And we're also avoiding impact on any endangered species. And to do that, we have had experts studying the flight patterns of the southeastern American kestrel and the sandhill crane. So we've had environmental scientists out in the field at this site over numerous occasions, I believe 12 occasions in total, over the last 12 months, studying those birds during their particular migratory seasons. So that has been actually recently, over the last couple of months, for the kestrel, and then last summer, in the early summer, June through, sorry, May through July, or the sandhill crane. So we're going to avoid impacts to those. And for the gopher tortoise, we'll also avoid impact to that gopher tortoise, but as you know, they're everywhere. So we assume they're there, and it doesn't make sense to study them now, because construction is still, if it were to be approved, several months away. So the way the ERP works there is we're given a conditional permit, and we need to, before construction, apply for the final permit to show that we have studied the exact gopher tortoise burrow locations in the immediate weeks, less than four weeks, before we start construction. And then when we go to start construction, we hire external experts to carefully remove those gopher tortoises and then move them elsewhere off the premises. They're actually allowed to come back in afterwards, so we'll have a little opening in the fence underneath in certain areas that only small mammals or gopher tortoises could crawl through. And if they burrow there, that's fine, because the racking that was mentioned can handle that kind of burrow. So now let me talk about the sinkhole. We are acutely aware of this issue, and the geologists, experts that are studying this issue have looked at every single sinkhole on the site. So there are 37 of them, split about evenly between the two halves of the project, 19 on one, 18 on the other. And we are going to completely avoid building in them. So it's the, this is a group of experts from the company called Terricon. This particular fellow is based out of Tallahassee. He has an extensive experience in karsts or sinkholes in this kind of limestone formation. They've completed minimal borings that are about two feet wide and 10 to 20 feet deep at every one of the two feet wide and 10 to 20 feet deep at every one of these karst locations. And we are submitting that karst sinkhole study to the Department of Environmental Protection as part of the ERP. So we actually can't get permitted until we prove to the state that we are avoiding the sinkholes as a manner of construction and that we're not disturbing them because they help drain the water. So we're not going to go anywhere near the sinkholes. We're not going to build there, and therefore our equipment won't be deformed if a sinkhole were to worsen. So were there other questions you'd like to bring up, or should I just go for my notes?
Let me just give you a couple more that I had. The board's going to have questions for you, but I just made some notes of what this young lady had asked. So about deterioration, could you answer that?
Yeah, so it's a totally valid point. Yeah, all infrastructure, all equipment deteriorates. And if you buy a tractor or a car tomorrow, you know that in a year it's going to be obsolete. It's not going to be as good as the newest model off the line. But that doesn't mean that it's not useful. I'm sure many of you have vehicles that are new, and those are useful, and vehicles that are old, and those are useful. My car is from 2007, and I still drive it every day. So it's, to the later gentleman who spoke's point, it's a matter of efficiency. And we expect the efficiency of the panels to degrade on the order of a quarter of a percent to a half a percent per year. And so actually, in 20 years, they're still close to 90% as efficient as they are today. That doesn't mean that there wouldn't be occasional replacements, but there would be a tiny minority of the total panels that are installed, which will remain useful.
Okay. One other question she had about decommission or possible bankruptcy by the companies?
Absolutely. So any company that declares bankruptcy can just walk away from whatever assets it has. That is a flaw, if you will, in the bankruptcy system. All I can offer is to show you that we have built over 2,000 megawatts, over 200 projects over the last 10 years. And we are one of the leaders in the nation, particularly focused in the southeast. So we have a long-term commitment to maintain these projects. The other thing I would mention is that this is a valuable project. It's interconnected to a transmission network, and it's creating electricity that is being sold, as the later gentleman said. So if we were to go bankrupt, there's always going to be somebody who will want to buy this project. If you have a nice car that's only a couple of years old, and somebody declares personal bankruptcy, that car will be sold at auction. And the same thing would happen to this project. I sincerely hope that doesn't happen, and I don't believe that it will. But the likelihood that is abandoned is the same likelihood that an office building would be abandoned. I think it's very low.
All right. Thank you for that. At this time, Commissioner Graham, will you have some questions?
I've got one question, but it's not on the parcel that we're on now. It's on the next hearing.
Sure thing.
So I don't know when y'all want to handle it.
I would prefer that you do it at the next one, so that is part of that.
Does it have any relevancy to this parcel at all? I mean, if it's something that we're going to need to talk about on this one anyway.
Well, it doesn't have a relevancy on this particular parcel, but it...
Okay.
And to clarify, we're talking about the southern parcel, right?
Correct. Correct.
We'll come back to it then.
We'll come back to it.
All right. Commissioner Hale?
Yeah, I have a question for you. And I don't think you asked it, but she had mentioned something about the natural disaster, hurricane damage. We also have people that like to shoot stop signs and things like that around here.
Yeah.
Could shoot your panel.
Yeah.
Could you speak to that?
Absolutely. So as I said, we're based in North Carolina. That's where most of our 200 projects are built. And we're completing recovery from hurricanes in the last two seasons. And so we have extensive experience dealing with this. Actually, depending on the racking used, the array is very resilient. And so we only use quality materials. So it won't be a situation where there are materials flying all over the place. The likely outcome is that a branch will fall on one of the wires that feeds from the array to the collector and just sever that wire. Or it will fall on a panel and pierce that individual panel, and then we would replace that. But this also relates to the maintenance question that somebody else raised. How would we know what's going on from Durham? And I think this is a worthwhile question to answer. So the way these projects are structured, there are somewhere between, depending on the setup, about a dozen and 100 panels that feed into a single inverter. And then there are many of those small inverters that feed into about 16 large inverters, in this case. And then those large inverters are collected and fed to the utility grid. So at each one of those small inverters, we can detect if there's any kind of fault. So we'll know if there is a problem with even a single panel, and we can detect that. And in terms of how we address that, we have maintenance crews stationed all over the place. So in North Carolina alone, I believe we have something like 15 maintenance crews for the state. We already have a maintenance crew in southern Georgia, and it would absolutely make sense for us to start a new one here, especially because we're considering other developments in the area. So the response time is quite fast. And in fact, actually, that response time is typically mandated by the utility. So it's a requirement we already have to meet. Does that adequately answer the question?
And I think she also mentioned the motor, the hydraulics. Are they electric, or are they hydraulic?
They're typically not hydraulic. They are typically electric. So there is a grease-bearing aspect, but it's a sealed bearing. And as the other gentleman was saying, you know, in my experience, I've visited many of these sites, there is no sound associated with the tracking. There is a minor sound associated with the collector station that delivers power to the transmission lines. But if you've ever been near the substation, so there's a substation at the end of County Road 248, it's the exact same sound that you would hear if you were just standing next to that substation. So it's a pretty minor noise.
And one last question.
Yes, sir.
Again, I was taking notes when she was speaking to, so you have a panel that's not working properly. It sets an alarm off. You send a guy out to take a look at it. He replaces that panel. Where does that panel go?
Yeah, so it goes typically to a panel manufacturer, a panel recycler. And this also brings up another point about the contents of the panels. So folks are absolutely right that some panels do contain cadmium. So there's a whole class of panels. They're manufactured typically by a company called First Solar, based in the U.S., or other companies based internationally, that are made from cadmium telluride, which is a specific chemical formulation. And cadmium, as anybody knows, is quite toxic. We are not using any of those panels. We have never used them, and we are not going to use them. The panels that we use are made almost entirely from silicon, which is just sand. And then there's a minimal amount of silver, and actually, there's more aluminum than there is silver. So the frame is aluminum, and then inside it's almost entirely silicon with a minimal amount of silver. So that's like almost the entire composition. There's a trace amount of nitrogen phosphorus there, but no nitrogen trifluoride. That, again, is specific to the cadmium telluride panels that we do not use. So silicon and aluminum are incredibly recyclable. When you buy an aluminum can, that comes from a stockpile of aluminum that's constantly being recycled. And an interesting fact is that 2/3 of aluminum that is used today, right now, is recycled. So those cans are using, 2/3 of that is recycled aluminum. And silicon is the same thing. You just melt it in a huge smelter, and you can start over again. It's not without energy input, but the material input is retained.
Anything else? Commissioner Flaven?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question. I just have some comments in.
Yes, sir.
I can understand and agree with what the individuals have said concerning their property. A young man came up and he said that we are sitting here making a decision. How would you feel if it were your property? Which we are landowners. I am a landowner.
Yeah.
And I can sympathize with the individuals, what they're saying. But also, at the same time, I know that more than technology have taken over. We got to have power. So I'm just, Chairman, I just have a comment. I don't have any question to act on.
Commissioner Richardson, any questions for the gentleman? If not, we'll have board discussion in just a minute.
I don't have any questions for you.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman. Can I make a... Could I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Because I thought maybe someone else might ask this question, or that it might be addressed by the speaker when he got up, because I'm pretty confident he heard everything that I heard. I'm going to try to reconcile a couple of things, and I'm going to pose a question. I agree with everything that Mr. Coke said about the need for energy. In fact, I've had solar arrays set up at a previous home that I had in the backyard where no one could see it. But I want to reconcile his statements with some other statements. Mr. Wayne Wright said that, I think he said, used the words unsightly. And then the gentleman got up and asked the question about, how would you like it if you were sitting on your front porch looking at it? I don't mind answering the question for you. I wouldn't like it at all off my front porch, if I'm at my front porch. But my question, though, I'm leading up to a question here that maybe I'm going to try to pose to you, and maybe you can answer it for me. Do these solar panels work just as good when they're not in close proximity to houses?
Uh, yeah.
I thought that they did.
Yeah, certainly.
And you've looked all over Swanee County, and did you try to find a location where there were no residential units in close proximity or right on the border of these proposed solar farm?
Yeah, so I did not actually start this project, but the short answer to your question is yes. The folks who did begin this project combed the entire county. And as Mr. Coke, I believe, that was his name, was saying earlier, we are limited by where the transmission lines run. We, if at all possible, need to build a project directly underneath a transmission line, or if not, within about a half or maybe at most a mile of a transmission line. So I encourage you all to go through the parcel map that you offer, or any Google Earth type of thing, and follow the transmission lines. If you draw a mile radius around any point of transmission line, I don't believe there's anywhere in Swanee County that you can draw that mile radius and end up with a place that doesn't have a residence in it if you're not in a wetlands. So we also are not going to build in wetlands. It's not okay for the equipment.
Did you say within a mile?
Approximately a mile is the distance we could build away from a transmission line.
Okay.
And so those transmission lines, for better for worse, also often tend to avoid wetlands. So if we were able to build in wetlands and that weren't an environmental concern, sure, we could be building in the swamp. But that's a huge environmental concern, and it's not okay for the equipment. And so we need to build on some kind of dry uplands. And I don't believe there is too much land adjacent to transmission lines that is also not adjacent to any kind of residence.
Okay. Well, I guess, well, I guess that's actually my question.
Yeah.
And I don't know that it has been answered, but so maybe it's possible to be with more than 1,000 feet from a residence and still be within that mile to the transmission line.
If we were to be measuring from the actual residences to the boundary of the property, I think in most of these cases, you'd be getting pretty close to that 1,000 feet you're describing. So we're obviously building right up into the property line, but in not all of those instances is the residence of the neighbor at the property line.
Okay. And I guess the last thing I've got to say is just a brief statement.
Sure.
Those transmission lines don't start and end in Swanee County, do they?
Not at all. Yeah, so they're...
They run all the way through.
Yeah. And so if you follow the news, FPL is building, planning to build close to 15 projects across the state in the next two years. And to my knowledge, none of them are going to be in Swanee County. We're not involved in that development, but the pace is fast, and that's why it seems like there's a lot happening here. I assure you, we're not targeting Swanee County for any nefarious reason. This is just what land is available. And so long as we're on the land use, if I may, there was an academic study from Oregon State University published in the last year. I'd be happy to email anybody the link, and also just be in touch generally. Only 1% of farmland would need to be converted to solar to satisfy all of the U.S. electrical needs. And that's not even considering solar that could be built in the desert. So actually, less than 1% of U.S. farmland could be converted to solar to meet all of our electrical needs. And so that is painful for the 1% of people who live under transmission lines or next to transmission lines. But I can assure you, not from my own studies, but from an academic published study that you all can read, that it is not the fate of farmlands to just inevitably turn out as solar everywhere. That is not going to happen. It would be too much electricity. We don't need that much energy. And briefly, the last point, I don't want to take up too much time, was just about the money. So yeah, we are interconnected into Duke Energy Florida, but Duke Energy Florida is the primary generation source for Swanee Valley Electric Co-op, in my understanding. I'd be happy if somebody could correct me with exact percentages, but I believe a majority of their electricity is delivered to them from Duke Energy Florida. And I believe, as Mr. Coke was saying, they sell that energy at about 11 cents, and he sells his energy to the grid at about 3 cents. We're going to be selling our energy at well under 3 cents. So this will have a depressing effect on the cost of power, if not directly to Swanee Valley Electric Co-op, then directly to Duke, and ideally also to the co-op.
Thank you. Got one more. Since we're talking about power, a light bulb just went off, and all of a sudden, Commissioner Richardson's got another question.
I've only had one, but that's good. There are three, what do you, what would you call, ponds on the south end of this particular property. And looking at the satellite view, it looks wet down there. So I would be interested in seeing a map of your, we normally, when we get these things come out, we get basically a rundown of where the solar panels are going to be at, kind of a rendition of it. But I am curious what you're going to do with that one.
Yeah, so that's already been identified as wetlands by a firm that is based in Tampa. And they, we, so as a consequence, we won't be building there. We began conversations with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for the ERP permit in October. The first thing we did was flag those to them, and they have already gone out and confirmed that those are wetlands. So we won't be building there. We will be avoiding that area. And I'd be happy to show you more maps afterward.
All right. One last question. You said something, light bulb went off in my head, too. You said farmlands, and you said you searched all over, and this was the only parcel you guys found suitable. Were you guys primarily looking for cleared farmland, or were you looking for any land? Because I know there must be a cost there to clear property, et cetera.
We work on agricultural timberlands as well. So I am developing several projects in other states, and I was in negotiations with a landowner at a time here for a project on agricultural timberland, so just trees and rows. And that would be totally suitable to us. The primary two constraints are transmission lines and not wetlands, so dry lands, and also flat, but this is relatively flat area. Those are the primary constraints from the land perspective. From a youth perspective, it's obviously the owner's choice whether or not they want to work with us. And I probably talked to 10 or 20 landowners for each one who says maybe. So there's plenty of available land out there, but we, you know, are not going to pressure anybody who doesn't want to work with us. It's not how I operate. So if somebody says, yes, they're interested, that's fine, but that's a minority of the available land who wants to do that.
All right. Commissioner Hale?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Graham, will you have something?
Yeah, since y'all got light bulbs going off, I'll let one go off, too.
Sir.
Can I have you back up here, please, sir?
Sir. Mr. Meeks, can you get him to come back?
I know you have two applications, but is this project contingent upon both of them being done, or if one passes and one doesn't?
It is contingent on both of them being done for the sole reason that Duke Energy Florida requires us to fulfill a certain capacity to meet our legal interconnection agreement, which is in a format tendered by FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. So they don't have any leeway on that, and we don't have any leeway on that. So if we can't build the full amount, then we can't build any of it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do I have anyone else wishing to speak? State your name and address for the record. Welcome, sir.
Dwayne, 981, 14 County Road 248, O'Brien. What I was wondering is, how many years will it take for... What I was wondering is, how many years will it take for the trees and shrubs to grow up so you can't see the solar farm?
Yes, sir.
And when they surveyed out the land, why didn't they use a local survey company in Swanee County?
All right, sir. Could you answer those questions for us?
Just gonna look up the name of the survey county we, we did use. I mean, I know the fellow, Thomas Mead, at Southeastern Survey and Mapping Corp, but let me see where they're based. Low service here. Okay. The survey company is based in Chipley, Florida. So we do our best to employ people who are familiar with the local area and there's no better expert than somebody who lives in the area. If they don't have a site on, that I can find on Google, I don't know how to find them really. But I've been, I've been trying my best. And so that was the, I think that was the best I could do.
All right, thank you. We're gonna have some discussion on the tree heights here in just a minute. So maybe that'll answer your question. Do I have anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Hearing none, I'm on closed public comment. At this time, we're gonna have board discussion. Mr. Chairman. Do you like to give, kick it off? Do you have anything?
I just have a question for the attorney. I know it's two separate applications, but was there a reason that it came to us as two and not one or is it
Separate parcels.
Separate parcels. Separate owners. Okay, okay.
Anything else?
No.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, you know, light kicking on a lot and while everybody was talking, all the questions was answered. But sometime you think, I think Mr. Harris said that, that transmission line started from somewhere don't end in Swanee County. And I think it's, it's a, maybe a hard question, a hard thing to say, but I was thinking about behind me, for instance, if, which I probably won't be living at that time, God forbid, I hope I do, if something like this were to come up, because it would be hard here for me to swallow if I was in that situation, if I was in that situation with a, a solar farm. And as I said, I know that it's, it's the future. You know, we gotta have the power, but we don't know where this would go. We can't imagine, there's so much stuff that's happening now. The coronavirus, which has, has just escalated and, and it has just blossomed. And it's, it is scaring everybody. And I think this, this, with these solar farms, I think it'd have effect on individuals because where the individual live at. It's all right. It's all right because it ain't at my front door right now. But the long effect that it would have on my children and my grandchildren, the people of this community, I'm concerned about the people of, of this community, the long effect, the term, you know, that it would have here. So I, I have a somewhat of a different opinion. And I know Mr. Koch got up and you explained it well, thank you. But I do have a question of why are Swanee County getting beat, you know, as a solar farm, a solar farm coming to this area when the transmission line don't start in Swanee County nor do it in Swanee County? You know, maybe there should be somewhere where the, I think you said it's about timber, some timber field or some oak farm or somewhere that perhaps where nobody live and, and these farms could be located. I think you said you were from Massachusetts and you was raised near one and I think you live in North Carolina now. I don't wanna be a dream killer, but at the same time, I don't wanna destroy what we have here in Swanee County. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Richardson?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. To answer your question, why Swanee County, Swanee County's got flat lands, farmland, and there's not a lot of people here. However, I've got an issue with, because there's so many residents. The last time we talked about this, no one come out, she was at things loud. No one come out and opposed it. The community didn't really care that much because, and it didn't say anything. But all we've heard from the community out here is opposition to it. And that concerns me. We've got res, I've identified four areas on every side of this particular parcel where people live. And though I'm not opposed in any way, shape or form to solar, I knew all the, a lot of those answers that you already had to give long before you had to give them. And they're not unsightly to me at all. I look out across the land and I see solar farms and I see, hey, that looks like something, looks like a community that's wanting to give back to their community. Plus, we got land that's being overworked and overused. And if the landowner wants to use it for that, then I don't have a problem with it. However, I do have a problem when our residents come up and they really, really speak out against it with a lot of concerns. And I think that if we can't address those concerns, then we need to think very long and hard about this. One of my major concerns is this. You said that you would place this substation either on the far east or the far west of this property, both of which are adjacent to land or to residents. And to me, that's a problem. Not only is it unsightly, but I mean, I wouldn't buy a piece of property, personally, I wouldn't buy a piece of property outside of a substation. I don't know what kind of, of things go on there, you know? I, I trust that it's okay, but I don't know. And I think at this point, what we're dealing with is a lot of I don't knows. And, and those I don't knows ought to be, ought to be addressed, at least in some way, studied so that we understand them very, very carefully. But my biggest issue is, is the substation and the fact that the residents all around this, this particular issue is, they're, they're opposed.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Or Chairman, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna say this and I think you ever, I'm hearing the same thing being echoed. I don't think any of us are opposed to it, but as you well know, when you came on the board, we had approved a solar farm prior to you being here. And of no fault of your own, I think there were some things that maybe could have been done better that we've all learned from.
Absolutely.
And I just want that to be mentioned here tonight because I know you kinda took it on the chin there for a while. But I, I just agree with everyone. I just, it's, it's all about, to me, I've got a Verizon tower on the left side of me and major power lines on the right side of my house. I live right in the middle of it. I see a strobe light every morning, strobe light every night in my backyard. So I can understand where everyone's coming from. To me, it's, it's, you know, where it's at, the buffering, how much buffering. I think someone asked about the height of the tree or the vegetation. So I, I just want us to get this right, is what I'm saying, before we, I just want you guys to know how I feel about this.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments before we have to make a decision on this. I'd first like to start by saying I'm 110% solar. I realize we needed, I realize it's a thing of the future. Actually, it's a thing of the present. With that being said, the gentleman made a statement that, that really kinda touched on with me. He said that, talking about other lands to where it could be put at and said wetlands that absolutely cannot go there because that's environmentally sensitive. Can't place it there. Well, there's something that's sensitive to me and that's residents. I, at this time, cannot support this if this company can't in some way come to an agreement with these residents, whether it's through additional setbacks or acres that is not in front of their homes. If there was some way that that could be worked out, along with additional setbacks that I think we need to look at along the highways, that would be the only way I could be in support of it. And I'm in support of, of what you're wanting to do. But when these folks get up and go to work every morning and they come home and, and sit on their porch, there's a reason they come to Swanee County because it's what we call God's country. And, and I got to be respectful of that, so. I think that you have some setbacks that's, and plant heights that's in there. And I, I still not sure if that's right where we need to be on, if we can get past the residential part of it. I think we're needing something that's gonna be a little more. So at this time, what we're gonna have to do is take a vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Before I say anything, could I let the honorable Jimmy Favat say something? Because he's over here, looks like he's biting at the bit, chomping at the bit.
Yes, sir.
Sorry about that, I didn't mean to walk on you.
It's all right. I was gonna interrupt for just a moment anyway. Mr. Chairman, several months ago, this board instructed Mr. Harrison and myself, you know, to start reviewing along with Mr. Meeks, you know, the comprehensive plan and the LDRs, you know, for the possibilities of how we could deal with solar farms. One of the last ones we did, did come up with these minor conditions that are listed as potential Exhibit B from the, from the last one. Well, as we were moving forward, it just, how we were working and the timing of it, it happens to be unfortunate that this application was submitted during a time period where we were fixing to submit something to you or for consideration as part of a comp plan change and an LDR change. I think yesterday, maybe this, this morning or something, provided you with a copy of an attachment to a resolution. It's kind of a titled document there that we've gone through and it gives kind of an outline of what we thought would be important, you know, for these items and for us to consider in all solar farms. Now, just because it appears in this resolution, I mean, the attachment to the resolution, doesn't mean that's the only thing that we would do. With the attachment to resolution and the recommendations, we still have to go back and reconcile things that do appear in the comp plan and, you know, the LDRs. But I thought it might be helpful or instructive tonight to look at this as what we thought would be appropriate and what we were going to present to you so that maybe you could consider each of these items tonight as part of conditions if you desire to grant these and is, is not a part of conditions if you're gonna deny it, period, you know, anyway. So I'd ask each of you, do you have an opportunity to get a copy of the, the attachment? I'm not seeing a lot of head shake down there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, well, I mean, with the first, our first approach that we took to this was we wanted to deal specifically with solar farms and so we were calling them alternative energy generation facilities. There you go. We'll be using a, they'll be using photovoltaic solar power to generate electricity. I'd call that a solar farm. So the areas that we were concerned with were uses of the property that would be made at the time, the buffering and environmental issues that would be surrounding them and the transportation and access that would be utilized to get to and from the, the site both during construction and after construction was completed. And finally, we addressed some of the administrative issues. Some of them have to do with definitions of various terms. But other things that we wanted to specifically address were the costs associated with decommissioning any of the sites that would be addressed. I'm sure Mr. Paul would be aware that in, in Carolina and in Virginia, they are having some bonding requirements so that, and it becomes part of, a part of the cost of doing business to be able to put up a bond over the life of the expected facility so that if something did happen like a bankruptcy or whatever happened or walked away for it for whatever reason, the costs of taking care of the cleanup and everything would be, you know, would be addressed. So if I can flip back to the very first page and let's talk about a couple of things under the uses and setbacks. As we approach utilizing the property, you know, for the electric facility, I don't think during construction, any other uses that are being made of the property during the time should be prohibited. If they're doing farming on one end of a 250 acre farm and they're building on 40 acres on the other side, those uses of farming wouldn't be precluded during that period of time. But once construction was completed, it would no longer have any of the farming ability on it and it would strictly be classified as the electric generation facility. We want to also think one of the things that, for uses is that the solar panels have to be arranged and constructed and constructed in order to get a maximum vegetative growth underneath the panels, you know, to get more back to natural conditions and to protect from erosion and other things that would happen on the properties. We would like them to also be, have as many wires hanging around as you would from the racking systems so that most of the lines that would be connected to the racking systems would be underground. And the only place that we would expect electric wires to be going would be going from the substation to the interconnection points. So that's, you know, you can't help it if you're gonna be two feet or three feet coming out of the ground in the rack, but no overhead wires and stuff, you know, going back and forth across the property. Lighting, there's a thing called dark sky compliant. I'm sure Mr. Paul's familiar with that. It's directing light for any of the lighting that has to be done on the facility, directing it down toward the ground so that it wouldn't be escaping from the property. So any lighting that you would have around the buildings would be dark sky compliant. Also, we don't think that solar farms should be attracting all of the attention, so we wanted to address signage issues on the property. Signage issues, we would recommend that there not be any commercial signage on the property and it be prohibited. The only signage that would be allowed on there, what I'm gonna call really just basically required signs. One, at any of the entrance ways that you, that you have, you have to have the required notification signs for all of the folks. It would be members of responders and contact information, that type of thing. And then secondly, basically warning signs that would be, have to be placed along there. And of course, those are pursuant to code where you have to put the warning signs along the entire exterior of the fence. I think those, those signs and their spacing are basically already set by the electric code and, you know, and part going across there. As for setbacks, we took into consideration that there's a difference in property that is being utilized for residential purposes versus property that is being utilized solely for agricultural or just non-residential uses. So we were recommending that if it's, a property is being residentially used or zoned for agricultural use, you know, as a, as a residence, that there'd be a minimum setback of 100 feet around the property line. feet around the property line. For many property that is non-residential uses, we were recommending a setback of 50 feet. This applies to all the solar panels or anything that is above ground. Typically, right now, we have the, or the substation itself has a maximum of 100 feet. That would be, like I said, in doing, readdressing the comp plan issues, those things would be the type of thing that would have to be changed in our comp plan. Again, looking at it from this standpoint, though, we have an opportunity, because it is a special permit, to put in more stringent things than what we normally may have in our comp plan. But again, these are just what we're recommending. As for fencing going around the property...
Can I interrupt for one second?
Yes, sir.
And this is just a good opportunity to do it because we're talking about the setback. And I was thinking about this as we were listening earlier, and I thought of something that we did, I don't remember who was on, probably Commissioner Fleming was the only one on the board at the time. But one of the foremost questions that commissioners and city councilmen wrestle with when they're considering a land use change or zoning change is compatibility. Question number one. And probably, if all of us answer that question first, then we can determine whether or not any of this other stuff even applies. But we never start with that. We always start with trying to make all things work well so we can figure out how to make everyone happy, and it just, in the end, we can't always make everyone happy. So that's probably the foremost question, is it compatible? Now, we wrestled with that question when we started working on the sawmill out there at the Catalas site. How many of you want one of those next door to your house? No one did. And we talked to the people out there. They didn't want a sawmill next to their house. If you go out there and look today, you're going to find that we have greater than a 500-foot buffer around that sawmill. And we put it to good use. We put water retention ponds in it because the county retains ownership of that buffer, 500 feet. And I only interrupted Mr. Pervat to say that we were talking about setbacks here, and these are very minimum setbacks that may or may not address the concerns that you heard expressed here this evening regarding the question of would you want to sit on your front porch and look at that? So I just wanted to point out that you may want to consider what 100 feet is versus that 500-foot buffer that we have around the sawmill out there and how it reconciles. There's no question that this is far more akin to an industrial use than it is a residential or farming use, a solar farm. I drove out there and looked at these properties, and they're very close proximity to the houses. I mean, there are established homes out there right next to where this proposed solar farm is. And then I drove up and looked at one of the solar farms that exists here today, and these solar panels, they look to me like they're 12 to 15 feet up in the air, very visible, and they would be from anyone's front porch or rear porch. Or you'd see them if you opened the drapes and looked out the side of the house. They'd be very visible. Why do we wrestle with the question of compatibility? Because it has effects on people's property values and on their quality of life. Now, I can go find articles online where appraisers have said, "Well, there's just no negative impact to property values." I could find the same things regarding cell towers. And we went through all those arguments for 20 years about cell towers. But the reality is, people aren't knocking on someone's door saying, "Hey, I'm looking for a new house to buy. I recognize that you live next to a cell tower. Will you sell me your house?" It just isn't happening. And I guarantee you, if you go to people who live next door to a solar farm and knock on their door and ask them, they haven't had anyone asking them to move out so they could buy their home. And what's the reason for it? It goes back to what Mr. Wainwright said earlier. He was very discreet and used the word unsightly. "I just think they're ugly." But that's my opinion, and that would be my opinion if it was my front or back porch. But on the setback issue, it really boils down to the question of compatibility. That's what you're really dealing with. And then all of these other things fall into play if you decide to apply them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Pervat, if we want to have this attachment, how do we need, do we need to vote on that before we vote on the motion?
Well, I wanted, if you would, maybe we could take a break right now, and, you know, everybody probably needs one this long anyway, and you could review the attachment during, you know, the break, and then we could come back and address each one of the individual items instead of me rattling through them, you know, as we go back through. And if they are, you know, you have questions about specific items, then you could get agreement among the board, and we could then utilize the attachment as the attachment to the, you know, to the resolution if the project is approved. But we can address these items as we move individually, I think. But I'm happy to hear myself talk, so it's okay.
Yeah, you gave us a long version, for sure.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something? Thank you. We're talking about compatibility and stuff like that. I just wanted to ask a question. Is it possible that when we're talking about this as well as compatibility questions, that if, that when we're looking at these projects, if our, if these companies that come in and want to do this, and the landowners that want to do this have a percentage, set a minimum percentage of the landowners that are adjacent to these particular things, a minimum percentage of approval? When they get signed petitions or whatever from these folks saying, "Hey, I'm good with it, I'm good with it, I'm good with it," and they got to meet a minimum percentage... I would, if the residents out here said, "I'm okay with it. If you answer all my questions, I'm okay with it," I'd be okay with it. I got a problem. You don't care what I think. We're supposed to care what you think, and that's why we represent you. And so that's, that's my question, is if we could, on these types of things, get a minimum percentage, like we do the MSBU sort of different.
You really can't do it and set it up as a law or a rule, but you can do it as an information gathering tool to help you make a decision. We'll take a five-minute break. We'll come right back.
That was only for 2% of, not the 98% that was doing the right thing.
Two still standing.
Right.
Three.
Three.
I think there's been a little discussion during the break. Would the representative of the solar company like to speak?
Yes. So these are all plans that seem perfectly reasonable to us, these proposals, augmentations of the setbacks, et cetera. I can briefly add that there will be essentially no lighting at all, and the signage all makes sense. But it sounds like there are also additional questions from the community, and, you know, as I said, it only makes sense for us to do this if the community supports it because we are going to be a partner in the land stewardship for a while. And so I think with that in mind, we'd like to talk more with the community, and to do so, could we please request a continuance for the vote? Whichever you prefer, in one meeting or two meetings, so two weeks or four weeks or six weeks, whichever works best for you all.
I would just say you could, within the next couple of days, get with our office and let them know what timeframe works for you after you've had a chance to maybe have some discussions.
Sure. Is Mr. Meeks the appropriate person to contact?
No. No, because we're probably going to re-advertise and make sure so their advertisement dates as well that we need to work with in administration. So contact, if you'll contact us, we'll talk to Mr. Meeks. He's pretty much done everything that he's going to need to do.
Okay.
At this point.
County administration.
So it would be a matter of, anything new that comes up, if it's documented, you can get it to us, and we'll schedule the advertising.
So I'll get your contact info after the meeting.
Right. 1-800-RANDY.
1-800-RANDY. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that being said, we're going to have a continuance, and would the landowners be okay with that and maybe have some discussion moving forward with the company?
All right. So moving ahead, with that being said, we will not listen to item 15. Moving on to item 16, have a presentation by Young Professionals. Commissioner Hale.
So I apologize for the time here tonight, but it was good. I'm glad you guys got to sit through this. I had the opportunity to go out and meet this young lady and her organization called the Young Professionals, and that's really all I'm going to say about it. I'll let her take it from there, but I'm proud of what they're doing, and I just thought our community should know about it.
Thank you.
Yes.
And thank you for inviting me. I really appreciate it. We've received a lot of support for our group. Our group is called the Young Professionals of Live Oak, and I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Lindsay Garland, and I coordinate this. I'm one of the co-founders along with my coworker Ben Glass. We both created this together, and it's basically a group for young people, about 18 to 35-year-olds, who are kind of starting out in their careers and just kind of want an outlet of some group to support them in what they do, to network, and then learn more about our community. Me and Ben created this group because we found a need in our community that there wasn't an outlet for us to really, after we go to college and then come back, or even if we move here from another city or so, there wasn't an outlet for us to meet new people, to socialize, and then learn more about what's going on in the community. So we created this group based off of that, and we meet monthly. So we do guest speakers. So we've had somebody from Marais Coffee, Will Hawn, the owner, come and talk to us about how he started his own business. We've had one of our own members, Shelley Williams, talk about how she is developing and creating her business of photography as well. So we're really interested in having guest speakers, people who have owned their own business, people who are community leaders to come and talk to us. We think that's really important to bring the community aspect into this group, just to make sure that, you know, we all live in Live Oak or we work in Live Oak, and just to make sure that we are here and we love our community and know, you know, have that support for it. And we've received a lot of support from the community, and I really appreciate that. And any support that we can get from y'all would really help us. Any kind of guest speaker requests, any kind of venues that we could be at, that'd be great. And so ultimately, that's our plan. We started in May 2019, and we kind of did a soft opening this past year of kind of just, you know, feeling and seeing what works, what doesn't work, and if it would actually thrive here in Live Oak, and it actually has. So we developed a board of five members right now, and we're going to do our first meeting this weekend, so we're really excited about that. And we're going to see a lot more of us once we create our vision, our mission, and establish goals for the year to come. So I thank y'all for letting me be here and speak, and I don't know if you have questions or... And I'm going to stay here until after the meeting's over, so if any of y'all want to talk to me, then please feel free to talk to me about it.
Thank you. Very good. Any questions? Not a lot, thank you.
What's the criteria for being, for the young people to be involved in this? Is there specific, they got to be out of high school in a career or what?
So we're just doing age 18 to 35. If you're about to, if you're 18 or still in high school, and that's fine, we are welcoming to them just because we just want to make sure that, like, there's opportu, we want to show them that there's opportunities in Live Oak and that there's leaders in Live Oak that will help guide them along the way. So that's basically the criteria. We would like you to either live or work in Live Oak. Even if you own a business like City and you do do business here in Live Oak, you can come over and participate as well. So we're pretty open in that aspect.
Live and work in, live and/or work in Live Oak.
Yes.
So that basically excludes our folks down in the South End.
No, Swanee County, I think.
Well, Swanee County.
Okay.
Yeah. I say Live Oak, but it's Swanee County.
And Catherine, you'd probably like, what were you guys doing at the state park? What kind of a...
Oh, so this past February, we had a meeting at the state park. It was on a Saturday. And so I work for the Swanee River Water Management District, and I asked one of our scientists, environmental scientists there, to come and join us and do a talk about what he does, specifically with wetlands. And so he came and talked. We did like a little nature hike. So a lot of people actually brought their dogs. It was a really fun event. And he talked about what he does, and then we did a nature hike and we played plant bingo. So he had photos of plants, and then we played bingo. We tried to like find the plants. So it was kind of cool to involve that aspect into it and, you know, the educational aspect for a really fun hike that we did. And then our next meeting is March 26 at 6:00 p.m., and we're actually doing a joint meeting with the Young Professionals of Lake City in Lake City at Fifth Generations, and we're going to do some wine testing and some food testing, and it should be a good time, so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Moving ahead to item 17, we have additional agenda items. Item number one, approval of payment for fence replacement associated with right-of-way acquisition to accommodate 161st road improvements. Mr. Harris.
That's really the request, Mr. Chairman. You've got the, we got the quotes, and we're simply going to go ahead and pay the property owners for the cost of that fence replacement that's got to be torn down in order to make the road improvements. I'm just requesting approval.
Fair enough. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fleming. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number two on additional agenda, adoption of resolution proclaiming this, the month of March 2020 as Census Awareness Month. Mr. Jimmy Norris, if you please make your way front and center.
Good afternoon. Good evening. Good to be here. We're just, quick update, since you guys are moving forward with this resolution now on the census. As you know, our department was kind of tasked with that, and we've taken it very seriously. We've worked really hard on it. And just, I know it's late, so I'm going to keep it really quick. We just want to let you know, obviously, we've been meeting. This first started out in August. We meet the third Wednesday at my office at the Work Nest at 9:00 a.m. We do have several members in here that are on that committee, and they're working really hard, and it's fixing to get really busy. As you see, there's a few items from Ms. Jennifer that you've all met from the U.S. Census Bureau. Wanted to be sure that y'all got those water bottles, and she said if you could please circulate those around and go around with your drinks everywhere you go. And then there's a couple of shirts up there. These just came in today. Our logo for Swanee Counts, you're going to see it all over the place. We're going to be wearing it at all the events that we're attending and working. Some of those events, obviously, will be coming up, the fair, 20th through the 28th. If any of you guys want to volunteer, that's like a nine or 10-day span, and I need about 50 slots filled. So it is important, though, because that money will fund Swanee County for the next 10 years. March 23, the High School is Professional Development Day. We'll be there. We'll also be at Wings Over Swanee on the 28th, and we will be in Bramford Catfish Festival on the 11th. We could use help with any and every one of those events. Just wanted to let you know also, we've reached out to all of our churches in the community. We mailed out letters to all of them and have called them to help get our faith-based community involved in this effort because it's really important, because people look up to those leaders and respect them, and it's very important that we have them on board as well. So follow us on Facebook, Swanee County Economic Development. If you can go there, you can track us and what we're doing on the census and at all the events we're at. And if you have any questions or anyone in the audience does, don't hesitate to call, call my office or email us at any time.
Thank you, Mr. Norris.
Thank you. At this time, do I have a motion to adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of March...
Mr. Chairman, for clarification, this is actually a proclamation.
Proclamation.
Proclamation, I'm sorry. Not a resolution.
Does it need to be read?
No.
Somebody...
Got a motion by Commissioner Richardson. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamble. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving ahead to item 18, at this time, we'll have, listen to public concerns and comments. If anyone's wishing to speak, we're gonna start out with a brief discussion on the hospital and things that's taking place here that, some of what we know about. Now, if anybody would like to talk about that to start with.
Hey, real, real quick, before we jump on the hospital, I just want to go back to this additional agenda item number one. Mr. Harris, on 120th Street, we already did the task order for chip ceiling it. There was about 800 feet of fence we removed. The individual was gonna purchase the fence and the post. We just need to put them in. And that was, that's what we had worked out. We've done the north side. He was ready to move on it. He was questioning me about it the other day, so I just, since we're talking about fence, wanted to...
I'll go ahead. We can get in touch with him if the supervisor has his contact information.
Eric, Eric has all his information, but...
Okay. We'll take care of that. You good?
That was all I had. Yes, sir. Thank you.
As most are aware, we've received some devastating news here in the last week or so about our hospital. It's being purchased by another company. In those negotiations, the, the discussion is closing the hospital bed part and just have an emergency only. I would like everybody here to know that we have reached out to these folks and really, there is, they're not able to have any comment until May 1st, when they effective, their effective date of taking over. So it's very hard for us to have, to sit down and express to them what we would like to see for Swanee County moving forward. And that is, we would like to see Swanee County have a hospital like it's had. It's frustrating. It's disappointing. It's very hurtful to the people that are possibly losing their jobs and not having a replacement. But I want everyone here to know that, and I'm, I won't speak for the board. I'll let them speak for theirself, but this board is in 100% of support of having a hospital in Swanee County. And the only problem is, we're not a party to these negotiations. This is a business transaction and we're a county entity. So the only thing we can do is request a meeting with them when they do close, where we can speak with them. At that time, we can express to them our concerns and what we would like to see moving forward as a community. We support everybody in this community, and we're gonna express that to these folks. But there's just a way that we have to go about doing it. Our hands are basically tied at this point in time. Moving forward in the next week or so, county staff and the board will work on the letter to, to get to the folks that are acquiring the hospital, that has an outline of, of what we would like to see and what, and the support that we have for this community. So what we are able to do, we are doing as we're moving forward, but it's very little at this time, and it's frustrating. If anybody's here would like to come up and speak to the matter, you're more than welcome. With that being said, if I have commissioners that'd like to speak on it, please do.
Do you got any?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would, I would like to say that, uh, I do have some concerns and maybe comment, but, uh, in the advice of the, of the attorney, it's something that won't be mentioned, but I, my heart go out to all the constituents and the residents of Swanee County. I would say that the board do have the best interest, but if it was just something bad to hear, do I like it? No, I don't. It's just bad news, and I feel like you all feel disappointed. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Richardson?
Just have a question. I don't know if it'll be answered or not. And that involves a certificate of need that was required to have that hospital here in the first place. Is that certificate of need still being met by this emergency room? Or is there another certificate of need that would need to be acquired? Or the same certificate of need allow another hospital to come in for an inpatient facility?
I would suspect that what they will be doing, if they are gonna be closing the facility or reducing services at the facility, that would, they would seek modification of the certificate of need. But at this point, I don't have any information on it to discuss.
Thank you. Commissioner Hale?
I, I'll just echo what you're saying. I do want the public and our, our citizens' community to know that we are as concerned about this as you guys are. You know, that hospital personally to me was, it's a very important part of, of our community. It was very important to me and my family not too many short months ago. We've lost my father-in-law since then, but that hospital was huge and it helped us. It helped us get through a lot of things. So just know that me, myself, and I do feel at this board, we're all gonna fight as hard as we can. We're gonna contact anyone we can, but unfortunately, we are at that point where no one can speak to us right now. So just don't lose faith in us. Just know we're working hard for you.
Yeah, can't speak to us, won't speak to us. I mean, when you call and tell them who you are and what you want to talk about, that, that ends the conversation.
Exactly.
And, you know, they're making a decision unfortunately based on the bottom dollar, and I understand the business side of it. But as a community, for the ones losing their jobs, it, you know, it's a nightmare. Not only for that side of it, for the continued growth and develop of, development of Swanee County, one of the first things that people look at before they ever look at locating a business here or relocating here to raise a family, is they look at schools and they look at healthcare. And we're fixing to go on the map as a community with declining healthcare. And I have no doubt that this board's willing to do whatever we can to prevent that from happening. Unfortunately, I think that it, there may not be much we can do. I know there's been state funding and federal funding, I'm sure, that has come through this hospital over the years. And I don't know if there's any strings attached to that funding, but if there's any way that Mr. Pravat can reach out to whoever he needs to through the state or through Representative Dunn's office or Rick Scott's office to see if there's anything with that federal and state funding that can be done to hold them accountable. I just, for the life of me, I can't believe that hospital was built, ran, and funded all these years off of indigent care money and different state and federal funding that has no strings attached to it. But if y'all agree, I mean, I'd like to send him in that direction if he's not already going that way.
And I'll just mention, I did have a quick conversation with Chuck Brandon, and I know he is reaching out to Senator Scott's office.
Well, I reached out to Representative Dunn's office yesterday. I got ahold of Will Kendrick. And, you know, we talked about, this seems to be the business model for a lot of these small hospitals in rural communities all across the country. But, I mean, they assure us that they're on our side, but I don't know what they can do other than what I've just requested us to ask Mr. Pravat to look into.
It's gonna be a slow, tough process. It's gonna take a lot longer time than what any of us would like to see it take. And we just gotta be there for the long haul for this community, and that's what we intend to do. Have a couple of special guests in the back, Councilman Stewart and Mayor Davis. So y'all, please come up and give us your thoughts a little bit. Welcome y'all from the city.
Thank you. Glad to be here tonight, and I just want you to know that we're behind you 100% and really appreciate your concern and your leadership. I've talked to a number of you, and just thank you so much for what you're doing. I know that when I got the call the other day, I told the hospital representative, I said, "You, you could have come over and just punched me in the gut." And when, I would have appreciated that more, because this, as you know, and as you've said, is a real blow to our community, to those who will lose their jobs there. But, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're a lot of poor folks here, a lot of elderly people. And this hospital means a lot to us, and I appreciate what you're going to, the message you're going to send to these folks. And, and I can't speak on behalf of the city council, of course, but I can tell you the mayor's office is gonna be with you 100%. The, the hos... it's not like a convenience store closing down. You can go somewhere else and get your milk, bread, and Lotto tickets. But hospital, they have a, I think, a special relationship to their community. And I agree with you, Mr. Gamble, it is a business decision, and people are free to make those decisions in our community. But the, the federal funds and other funds that have come to us, I think is a good point to begin with and just discussions with them. But healthcare is a personal intimate thing, and it's, it, it, I, I think they, they owe us something. At least an explanation and an opportunity to try to do something and not just to shut us down and not talk about it. So again, thank you so much. I know that, I think the president is going to be bringing this to the council and getting a supportive letter of some sort, and, and we're with you in any way that we can help.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for having us tonight. We do need to work on this on a unified front, for sure.
Absolutely.
And what I understand, the only thing that'll be out there will be the emergency room, is that correct, and the lab?
That's our understanding at this point.
So we're gonna lose the doctor's offices that are over on the west hand, west side.
I don't think they addressed that.
So we're really gonna need to try to recoup some, some doctors and what have you. But if we can work with y'all, we can do this jointly, that us know what we need, resolutions, whatever, we'll certainly do it. Appreciate y'all's effort on this.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. We appreciate y'all. Have any, any other person wishing to speak or be heard from the public this evening? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward. Well, you don't have to for this. Name an address for the record.
Appreciate it. My name is Donald Reagan. My address is 816 Coliseum Avenue of Live Oak, Florida. There's very little that I am able to say. I'm the chief nursing officer for Shan's Live Oak. And on behalf of myself and I have another fellow employee here, and all of the employees that are currently at Shan's Live Oak, we do truly appreciate the willingness and the support that not only Chairman and, and the rest of the commissioners, but the city and the mayor and all of the other leaders that are willing to support us. And yes, we all are bound by, we can't say anything until March for, or May 1st, and it makes it very difficult. But I, I just wanted to say thank you very much for your support. Once again, Donald Reagan, you're more than willing to reach out to me. Can't say much, but you're more than willing to reach out to me. I think y'all know where my office is at. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here. Anyone else wishing to speak? With that, I'll close. Public comments. Mr. Harris, you have any closing comments?
I could talk a little bit more about my front porch, but y'all postponed consideration of that. Let me just, I want to say for the public's benefit that when this hospital issue became an issue just last week, the first comments were made that anyone heard, I immediately heard from every commissioner on this board. It wasn't just people from the community, but all these commissioners were calling saying, "Okay, we gotta figure out what can be done, what we can do, and let's figure it out quick." I appreciate the response of the commission, like everyone else does, but I'm telling you, we've made lots of phone calls and continuing to make phone calls, and they know that we're expecting some type of response as soon as whoever's gonna be communicating back with us after this closing, what can be done and what will be done going forward. But I, I just wanted to commend the commission for jumping right on top of that. Everyone's taking it very serious. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Pravat, you have anything to close with?
Uh, no, sir. I've, I've taken your directive and already moving forward.
Thank you, sir.
Had a feeling you probably were.
Commissioner Richardson, closing comments?
I'll just say this. I, I read on Facebook some negative comments about the hospital and I probably have echoed some of my own personal opinions, but let me tell you something. And every, and it's not towards the hospital, by the way. Every person that works at our hospital is, they're important. We have nothing but good people there, and I know because I've had two generations of my family going in and out of that hospital. And, you know, I, I think about the indigent care that's gonna be, that's gonna have to figure out a new place to go. People can't afford to go all the way to Lake City. Families can't afford to go to Lake City or Gainesville to visit them, and this is a shame. And so, so I feel for you folks, and you have my complete support, as well as the boards. And we're gonna do everything we can to change this some way, shape, or form. Other than that, I just wanted to echo what y'all had said, and since I just asked a question, because I wasn't sure what I could say and what I couldn't say. I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Fleming?
I don't have anything.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Gamble?
I just got one question, and you, Adam, or I'm sure y'all might be able to answer it. They gave basically a 60-day notice with, that it's going to a standing-room ER, I guess, or they're, they're closing. I don't know when they're going to the, to the ER, but have y'all had any talks on, is that gonna increase our transport loads? And, and the reason I'm asking, are we, are we looking at, we're gonna have to, to do something to be able to?
Absolutely.
To, to handle it? And the reason I'm saying that they, they can no longer send them to a bed. If they need a higher level of care, they got to ship them out.
We're weighing that out. My name's Tim White, Deputy Chief, Swanee County Fire Rescue. We are looking into that, and we're, we're diligently examining what's taking place as well. There is the possibility of a slight increase with some of the different things that will go on and possibly transfers. It is possible that it's something that we would have to look at in the future as this takes place.
I mean, under our, under our current staffing and equipment, can we handle a slight increase? Or are we gonna be put behind the eight ball almost immediately, you think?
We would have to look into that and get back with you on that. We have some equipment that if we had to put an additional unit in place, that we possibly could sustain that for a short time before we would have to determine how we wanted to move forward and if we wanted to staff an additional unit or what the Lord's pleasure would be.
Okay. I know it's early in that decision-making process, but I just wanted to ask. Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you, Commissioner Gamble. Commissioner Hale?
Just one quick thing. Madison County has reached out to me, one of their board members. They have, their board actually passed a vote to hire a conservation lawyer firm. They do research, things of that nature, and they're going to move forward with looking more thoroughly into the water spills from Valosta. They have a workshop planned for Friday night in Madison, 6:00 PM. If anybody wants to go, it's a public workshop. They have expressed, I, I don't have a cost of that, but they were wanting to invite me and maybe a board member from Hamilton County over to sit in, and then we can come back and tell you guys what they're looking to do and all that. I just wanted to put it on the radar with you guys and let you know, I think, like most of us, Madison County's about had enough of it. And they're moving forward with taking some action, and I want us to support them in that effort.
Absolutely.
I agree with you. I had talked to a couple of them that said that they were thinking of moving forward with hiring an attorney, because I just, I don't think the state's gonna pick it up and really, really move it. And the ones that are most affected about it is Hamilton County, Madison County, Swanee County. By all means, I mean, if they're not, if it's within our means to support them and help them, I, I want to. I don't want to break the bank to do it, but...
Sure. And I'll bring that back to you guys.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Just to close in comments maybe on the hospital, I just, we're gonna do what we've always done as citizens of this county. We're gonna come together. We're gonna fight for what's... We're gonna fight for what's right. And at the end of the day, it may be a long time before we get there, but we will get there. So the sun's gonna come up. I just ask everybody to keep pushing forward, stick together. That's how we make a difference. I would like to say thank you to all the residents that come out tonight and had a difference of opinion, and was able to be respectful of each other and everybody hear each other. And at the end of time, we're able to make a decision and have some more discussions, and, and it'll come back, and we'll see where it goes from there. But I just, I appreciate everybody being professional about that. That means a lot. That's there again. That's the great people of Swanie County showing it. They got common courtesy and respect for others, even when you're upset about something and you got passionate about something. All I need is a motion to adjourn.
Real quick, when that gentleman said silicon, was he meaning silicone?
I'm not, I'm not gonna answer that.
Okay.
Because I don't know it.
Okay.
I got a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.[1796.61]